Call the meeting to order. I would like to tell you, we're going to have the pledge allegiance, and then after that, we will have a moment of silence to recognize law enforcement officers in the Dallas area and those that were fallen this last week. So if you would just remain standing after the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the July 12 Minnehaha County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender, and if you need a listening device, Robert is at the front desk and he could help you with that. That way we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from July 5, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $5,90,989.28. Is there a motion?
The bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments?
Madam Chair, today's bills, of course, include $3.3 million going back to the state from vehicle registrations, plus it has a million and a half or so in highway contracts. So the bills are really not as big as $5.5 million.
Okay, thank you. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is a human services second quarter report for services provided to Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. Item B is a Minnehaha County highway report for July 2016, and item C is a Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for June 2016, and those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is special action. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. The last item I have for you today is just to formalize something that's been discussed in previous meetings and budget hearings. Due to a recent contract with Lutheran Social Services, we're asking for your formal approval to eliminate from the payroll budget of Juvenile Detention Center the vacant position of juvenile cultural and equity coordinator.
I'll make that motion. Have a motion. Is there a second? And just a comment, that this has been contracted for now, and that this position has not gone away. We've just changed how we're doing it. So have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number seven is applications for abatements. There are none. Excuse me, that was item number six. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice for the Brennan Rock and Roll Academy of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on August 2 and August 19 at the Bad Lions Motor Speedway, 2012 Split Rock Boulevard. Bring it in. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. And next we are to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Auditor. Good morning.
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz, today I'm not representing the auditor's office. I'm here as a former Navy veteran, and the thing that I'd like the public and you to know about is rare honors coming to Minnehaha County, July 18 through the 24th, as Sioux Falls will be hosting Navy Week. Each year, the United States Navy visits a handful of cities across the country. The program is designed to help Americans understand that our Navy is deployed around the world, around the clock, and ready to defend us at all times. Navy Week will bring a wide variety of sailors to our community, from enlisted personnel to Rear Admiral Brett Mylenberg, the Commander of Naval Facilities Engineering Command, and the Navy's Chief of Civil Engineers. While in Sioux Falls, sailors will take part in dozens of public events with corporate, civic, government, education, media, veterans, community service, and diversity organizations. In addition to the Admiral, the following groups will participate in Sioux Falls Navy Week. The Blue Angels, we're all familiar with them, they'll be coming for the airshow. The Navy Leapfrogs, that's the Navy's elite parachute team, they're experts at insertion and extraction. Several Navy bands, we have the standard Navy band, they also have a blues band and a jazz band. Crew members from the PCU South Dakota, that is the newest nuclear submarine in the Navy's fleet, and it's currently under construction in Groton, Connecticut. It will be SSN 790, which is the Virginia-class USS South Dakota. The USS Constitution Sailors, and they represent the oldest vessel in the United States Navy, which is on display someplace out on the East Coast. I'm not sure where they've moved it to now. We've also got several hometown sailors who've been deployed, and they're coming back to their home state. Some of the free activities, public events, and community service projects planned for Navy Week in Sioux Falls include the kickoff on Monday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM at the Oakview Library, a ceremonial event at Veterans Memorial Park and the Battleship Memorial. They're also going to work on Habitat for Humanity projects. They're going to visit the YMCA Leaf Erickson Day Camp, the Boys and Girls Club of Sioux Falls, and the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and the Multicultural Center, and the Downtown Library. Visits by Rear Admiral Mylenberg to Raven Industries, the VA Medical Center, and South Dakota State University, as well as Augustana University. Multiple demonstrations by the Leapfrogs, including a jump on Tuesday before the Sioux Falls Canaries game. Numerous performances by the Navy bands, including the Rock Island Block Party at Fort Sod Plaza, and that'll be a noon concert near Raven Industries, and a concert for teens at the Downtown Library. Navy Week concludes with the 2016 Sioux Falls Air Show on Saturday and Sunday. For details on those many public events, please visit www.souffalfsnavyweek.com. I'd encourage everybody to go to a few of these events and see what the Navy is providing for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to actually put Jesse on the spot. If you just want to come up, Jesse, and introduce yourself, and he's the new Hartford Economic Development personnel, so.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. Hello, my name is Jesse Fonker. I'm from Ober, South Dakota. I recently started work as Hartford's Chamber and Economic Development Director. I look forward to working with all of you moving forward. I have a lot of good things we can do. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Any other public comments? All right, with that, we'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a resolution to declare bridge structure number 50-095-127, located 8.7 miles south and a half a mile west of Colton, as surplus property for disposal and authorized appraisal.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, Highway Superintendent. If you remember, this bridge is on Vannemark Avenue, and we had closed it several months ago as a result of its condition, and it was decided to be closed, not replaced, because of its location on a end of a township road, basically, that services a house or two, and then after this bridge, it turns into a dirt road that has access to a couple properties. So we decided to close this bridge rather than replace it. It would have been several hundred thousand dollars to replace the structure, and without it serving anybody that lives out there, we figured it would be right to close it. So the next step was to either declare it surplus, or find out what to do with the structure, and an adjacent landowner had showed interest in having the bridge moved to their property, and so we decided, at the time of closing it, not to have the commission take any action on what we were going to do, because we wanted to investigate a couple different options with that adjacent property owner, and then ultimately another contractor that was interested in possibly taking ownership of the structure. We've had several conversations with those two parties, and basically weren't able to come to any kind of agreement on how we would transfer the bridge to one or both, or one of those groups of people. And so after having conversations with our state attorney's office, we thought the best thing to do would be to declare it surplus and have an open bid to see if anybody wanted to bid on this structure. We would expect possibly, or hope, that we would receive a $1 bid, and somebody would remove the structure and take ownership of the structure itself. The bridge is pretty neat looking, and that's why we think that somebody may be interested in having it. It's not something like a normal concrete structure that we would replace and just demolish and take to the landfill. It's a pretty neat steel-structured bridge that we think somebody may have an interest in. So if we ended up not receiving any bids on this, then what the bridge crew would do would disassemble the structure and take it to a TGN or somewhere where they can just scrap the metal that comes from the structure. So if you have any questions, what our plan is, I can answer them. Otherwise, we would request your approval to declare the bridge surplus and authorize an appraisal for an eventual bid to see if anybody wants to take ownership of the structure.
Commissioner Burns.
DJ, does the bridge need to be removed? What if it was access to it on the road was blocked, but it could be used by bicyclists or something? Is that...
The bridge has been closed with barricades for the last several months, and it has remained in place. The road is a gravel road on the south side, and the road is a dirt road on the north side of the structure, and there's not anybody that has recreated out there that we're aware of. Our bridge crew has been out there a few different times, and they've said that they haven't seen anybody. There's one house just south of the structure, and then a couple more houses farther down south, but it doesn't appear that there's anybody that uses that roadway.
Despite the fact that it's not used, do we need it to be removed?
I think it's a liability to the county if anybody would go around the barricades or be on the structure if something were to happen. Right now, it's the owner, the ownership is under Minnehaha County, so I do think there is a liability there.
Gotcha.
And it is structurally unsound, so I do believe that it should be removed to remove any liability.
I think Kirsten just put a bid in.
[laughing]
I'm just nodding in agreement on the last point.
Any other questions for DJ?
I would make that motion to declare it surplus.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Bender, you had a comment?
I just had one question. DJ, I'm assuming that the property owners that you're referencing all have other access to their properties, and so the removal of this bridge doesn't strand anybody.
That's correct, yep. Access is provided either direction on this road, and the reason that the adjacent property owner wanted the structure was so they could move the bridge on to their property over the same channel to basically go from one side of the creek to the other without having to go around the section. And it's just a field approach that, or a field access that he was wanting to gain access on. So he's not in any way unhappy or mad that the bridge was closed, he just thought it would be easy to put over onto his property.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll second Dick's motion there.
Okay, we had a motion and a second for, to declare this, what's already declared, to dispose and authorize the appraisal. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 is to consider a resolution to establish boundaries of Hartford Area Industrial Park Road Districts. Auditor Litz.
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and a while back, we had an inquiry about this road district, and it seems to have been taking place over quite a few years here. There's, you know, it's been, it's been trying to be developed, I don't know, since 1999 is what I think. But the thing that has taken place that's been interesting since then is there's been a proposal to take Brower 1 and Brower 2, combine them into a no-road district. I've been working with Chris Healy out of Meyer Henry Sargent to facilitate this and move this thing forward, and the thing that, if you look at Brower 1, that was the first part of the road district that came in, and that was never really a road district, it was a road association. Brower 2 was a legal road district, and this commission had passed that and documented it. However, Brower 1 has never been able to get the pavement and the road and the drainage that they need to make Part 2 more effective. Well, they've come together now and want to combine the two, dissolve the road district, and make the road association and the old road district one new road district. I believe that they have met the requirements here. The name of the proposed road district, they've met that. Number two, demonstrated need for improvements in roadwork in the territory described. The legal description of the proposed area has been met. Requesting, now they're requesting that the Board of County Commissioners define the boundaries for the district, that a referendum be held within the territory so defined on the question of a road district in the territory, and that the board determine such a district be created. If you pass this today, what I will do is, we will publish a couple of notices, and we will actually hold an election out there. And the first part of the election will be whether or not they actually want to have this new road district. Everybody will agree with that, so I'll need 50% plus one. And then the second part, if that passes, will be to elect the new Board of Governors out there. And so today, I'm asking that you approve this resolution so that the petitioners may proceed with the action they desire.
Okay, questions, Commissioner?
Who votes in the election, the property owners or the occupants?
There were some changes in state law. It was either in 2012 or 2013, I believe, and then that has changed to be the property owners get to vote in this.
To rental.
If they're a registered voter in Minnehaha County.
Commissioner Bender.
Then apparently, they don't get to vote. I mean, I have not looked at that law or got an opinion from Kirsten. I mean, I've looked at it, but I'm certainly not a lawyer. But that was my interpretation of it.
I was wondering if we could have legal counsel comment on the requirement under SDCL 31-12A-2, that the application include a survey that's verified by affidavit of the surveyor?
Sure. Commissioners, the, I do believe Bob went through the contents of the petition, and that's 3112A-3. Your job today is to determine whether all of the requirements of the chapter are met in going forward on this election. That does include the separate statute that Commissioner Bender mentioned here, and there is a requirement for a verified survey and map. If I understand correctly from conversations with the auditor, if you look in your packet, there's a color map with the heading Hartford Area Industrial Park Road District. I believe that was submitted by the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And also in your packet is a, two black and white documents, one exhibit for road district, and the other's preliminary plan for Brower 2nd Edition. I believe that was added by county staff in this case, and I guess, looking at that statutory requirement, I'd note that the survey and map with the boundaries of the road district are to be accompanied by that verification by a surveyor. I shared with you an opinion on that, as well as the limited, limited secondary sources, including an Attorney General's opinion on that. I think there's an argument to be made that the applicant needs to submit, along with a map, which they did, a verification from a surveyor, that those boundaries are accurate as we go forward. I know that county staff has worked really hard to get this going forward and gather the exhibits that you need, but I would point out that the additional black and white drawings, at least, that you have are actually predating this application from 2000, 2007. So I guess, the long and the short of it is, I think it's an open question, but technically, I do think that a surveyor's verification is required as to the map that accompanies the application.
So they would need a survey for the outside blue boundary on the map?
I hate to tell them what exactly to do. There, I think there are two minds out there, whether it needs to be a new survey and map done by a surveyor and verified on the face of it, or whether a surveyor can submit an affidavit based on surveys already done and say, hey, the borders on this exhibit are a true and accurate representation of the properties that are going to be within the road district. The reason I point this out is just to verify that going forward, we have a entity that's being formed that has clear and authoritative taxing power going forward, because this road district, if adopted, will have taxing power, power to levy taxes and power to spend those tax monies on for the limited purpose of roadways in the area.
It would basically be a protection for the Hartford Area Industrial Park.
Arguably, yes. And to be clear here, in my comments here, is advice to the commission. I'm not purporting to give advice to the people interested in forming the road district necessarily. They have to make that call themselves.
Okay. Additional comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Just, let's go Kelly first.
In the map, there's three different scenarios here. One, in that southeast corner, the blue lines eliminate, or does not include that. Then you go to the next map, which shows it's Block 3, Lot 9, and then you go to the next map, and it says it's Block 2, Lot 7. Which map are we looking at?
Well, I would, I would like to, what the difference in these is, is the first map that does not, the one that we're looking at up on the screen that does not have the engineer stamp, that was the one that was for the road association. And the road association does not require them to do that, and what he has done over the years is, when he sells off these individual plats, lots, they have to be platted, and that was evidenced by the papers that I passed around. So they've been individually platted, and there's still a couple of lots for sale out there, to be fair about it. Now, the second, the second exhibit that I have that shows the road district, the next one down, that is stamped on there because it was a road district, and it was required to be totally platted before it was approved by you. And I would, while I appreciate Mr. Kat Myers' abundance of caution, I would, I would make the argument that each of the lots that has been sold has been individually platted and paid for, and the cumulative effect of that is what we're looking at here today.
Commissioner Kelly.
On the final one, the one that's got the stamp on it, neither the northeast or the southeast lot show any access to the property to the east. So if they want to do any development there, they have no access through Brower. I don't understand why, you know, on the original one, or the, I'm not the original, but the Exhibit for Road District, they show a right-of-way going east on Kelsey Drive and on Jeffrey Street. But, and if the preliminary plan is the one we're talking about, then there's no access from either Kelsey or Jeffrey. Aren't you precluding any development to the east by this? Am I wrong or right?
I believe they all have access.
Kirsten has a comment.
Let's be clear on what everybody's role is on this. Your role is to look at the petition, see if it's sufficient to go forward with an election. Bob's role isn't to decide what areas are in the road district here. That's, and I wish someone was here from their, I guess, office, or somebody representing him, but you're taking what's on the map, and I mean, it's a question, but not for Bob. I think, I guess, maybe that's where I'm going with this, is...
Who's it for? The road district?
The people, the constituents who want the adoption of the road district that have signed the petition.
But does the guy to the east have any say in this at all?
To the east of exactly what, Dick? I'm trying to figure...
Of the Brower Edition. If I'm looking at this right, the...
Are you looking at the colored map with the blue line?
No, I'm looking at the second, the preliminary plan.
Okay. The one that shows Lot Number 9 in the lower right-hand corner?
No, that one shows Lot Number 7. It shows...
Okay, that's the second edition. There's access to that.
Right there.
Yeah.
The access that Lot Number 7, that 2.95 acres would have, would be right...
Is there potential access to the property to the east on what they're asking?
But you know what, Dick? This, it isn't our problem, that if they develop a road district, that's what their responsibility is, not ours.
Yeah, but getting, you know, what if somebody wants to come in and build a manufacturing facility on the east?
That's their problem.
That's their problem, because it's their road district. Commissioner Bender?
I think, given the fact that our legal counsel indicates that, to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's, that we should have an affidavit from a surveyor in, as well as this petition, that I would like to not move to approve this at this time, and give them an opportunity to come back with the affidavit that is required, and then we can take action on it.
If I may, and just an additional comment. I think, I think the Commissioner Kelly's questions kind of highlights an issue that we have with this, in that our different exhibits that we're looking at, I mean, there are some differences in where the borders are drawn on the applicant submitted application, and what county staff has gathered as part of this, too. I think that highlights maybe getting a better definition of, okay, what exact property is exactly involved in here according to a plat, so.
Because if I'm looking at the colored, the aerial, it does show the roads there. So it's the one prepared by staff that, kind of confusing, I guess.
So I think having the affidavit would be helpful, and perhaps I would give the opportunity for the proponents of this to also have an opportunity to come and answer any other questions we might have before we take action.
Do we want to defer it? Do we want, you want to defer it?
That's fine with me. I think we...
Madam Chair?
Commissioner.
I just, you know, the fact that these things are stamped by a registered land surveyor and dated, you know, several years ago, is the technology from 2007 so archaic that a survey no longer is relevant from 2007? I mean, I'm looking at the, the black and white thing for Section 2 there, and it says Registered Land Surveyor Paul A. Sandman, 42307. That doesn't count?
I think it's a matter of having it all together, so we know that they're all joined together, and where those boundaries are at. Am I correct?
No, we've got three different maps.
Madam Commissioner?
Hi.
Hi, Julie Risti, Register of Deeds. May I just make a couple comments?
That'd be great.
A survey that's recorded with us, that's certainly authenticated, and that's one of the legal requirements, is they have to have their seal and sign it on the document that they record with us. And we do receive surveys that we record in our office every day, so that's still very much a part of the process. I would suggest that you do go with the affidavit by the land surveyor, and perhaps request that he attaches a survey that does actually show the area that is in question concerning the road district. Because the surveyors actually come down, and they research all, everything that's recorded in our office, as well as whatever access easements might be there, which you may not see on the documents that are in front of you, because they may not be the most current. And so there can be instruments recorded with us in addition to plaits, that would perhaps create an easement, access, that type of thing. So when they do that affidavit, they would include that information. So you would have a current picture, one that's really well-defined and mapped out, and that would be my suggestion. And then you know exactly what's up to date. The aerial photograph that GIS has is wonderful, because you can get a general idea of what the area is. It may not always be as precise as what's actually recorded in our office. So that's where having the affidavit by the surveyor, along with his drawing, that will show precisely, exactly where the boundaries are, what it includes, and what the dimensions of everything are.
So the Hartford area could just get a surveyor to go through your documents and map it out, and give us an affidavit?
Absolutely. In fact, that's probably, that's generally, that's what surveyors do. They spend a lot of time in our office doing just that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would point out that, you know, Hartford isn't going to do this. It's the Mr. Brower and the people in that subdivision that'll have to do it, and we have a long history of substandard roads and litigation in that subdivision, where I suspect at one point or another, we've had, you know, three or four different lawsuits ongoing at any given instant. And the idea of being able to fix this subdivision and make it right is very appealing to me, because then, you know, it could be annexed into the city and made into the industrial park jewel that it deserves to be. And so as we throw additional impediments, who wants to spend a couple hundred bucks on hiring a surveyor to do this extra bit? on hiring a surveyor to do this extra bit? I just am concerned that, uh, you know, the, the neighbors there already hate each other enough to, uh, then throw this, uh, thing, uh, off the track. That's my worry.
Commissioner Heiburger, I would just say that that actually is an argument to me to do things right and make sure that we've act, you know, that we've clearly dotted our i's and crossed our t's, if there's a, if there's, um, a history of, um, animosity or concern out there that we want to make sure that this is done right because that gives it the best opportunity to succeed and become the jewel of Hartford that it, um, has the potential to be. And so, um, you know, I'm not exactly sure how long it will take the proponents to, um, get a prepar, appraisal certified as required, uh, not an appraisal, a survey. And I don't want to throw, I don't want to defer it so long that we put unnecessary time strains on them. Um, so I have, I struggle a bit to know how long to defer it, but I'm assuming that if we defer it for two weeks, if they aren't able to get the information they need at that time, we can push it back further at that point.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I agree with, uh, Jean, I, we've been fighting this battle for five, six years, I believe.
More.
And, and, uh, I, I think it's important to get it done right. These, this road district will have taxing authority, and when we give somebody that authority, we better know exactly what we're doing. I'm concerned that, that if it's not done right, we end up with no access to the east. And if Hartford continues to grow under this young man, um, you know, there probably will be development out there someday. So, I, I, I agree with Jean, I'd certainly, I'd, I'd move to defer for a month.
Can we have a comment?
I don't think it makes any difference.
Can we have a comment from Kirsten?
Sure, and I would just say, as you consider action, remember, deferral just places it on a, a date certain going forward. I mean, ju, just because you say the requirements aren't met today doesn't mean it couldn't be brought back next week, I mean, if they get the affidavit, so, I mean, I, I don't know what you prefer, if you prefer to set a date out certain, but I'm sure legal counsel will be working on it fairly quickly either way. You could just outright deny or decline at this time, or you could set a date out certain, it's certainly up to you, but I'd just point that out, that just because you decline it today doesn't mean they have to wait a certain time period to bring it back or anything like that, so.
Madam Chair, I think what, uh, Mr. Katmeyer just said about, why don't you just decline it, and I'll work towards bringing this thing back to you, and I think Commissioner Kelly's right, I don't, I don't think you're right about the access because that's whose ever problem it is, but these maps are not lining up, uh, upon closer examination. And Mr. Barth, it won't be a couple hundred dollars, it's going to be somewhere in the area of five to seven thousand dollars. Uh, but why don't, uh, you know, I, I guess, uh, I guess, I don't know if I want to withdraw this, or if you guys want to deny it, and I'll work towards, uh, some resolution on getting you the affidavits of the map for the territory's district.
That's what I was wondering.
Take no action.
Well, I think once it's worded, or, uh, the wording of the statute is, once it's submitted to you, I, I think it's the best case action to just take some action on it.
And I'm going to move for, I'm going to move for a sixty-day deferral.
Is there a second on the sixty-day deferral?
The point of order?
Commissioner?
If you move for a sixty-day deferral, then does that mean I have to bring it back in sixty days, or I could bring it back whenever I get it done in a sixty-day time period?
I think it puts a timeframe on, on, uh, I mean, that can always be changed, but, I like, I like to see a definite deferral rather than indefinite. So, that's my motion if there's no second one.
Kirsten has a comment.
There's a motion.
Is there, is there, is there a second on the motion? Ties for lack of a second. Kirsten, you have a comment on it?
I just add, you know, there is legal counsel working on this outside too, I don't, I don't think there's going to be a motivational issue to, to get this resolved within a certain amount of time, so, if that helps you in making a decision on what to do with it.
Commissioner Bender?
I'd make a motion to deny it at this time, um, just with the caveat that we're desirous of getting this done, we're just wanting to give them as much flexibility as possible as to when to bring it back.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second to deny. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
So if we deny it, uh, can they bring back the same paperwork with the additional verification?
They can come back next week.
Mm-hmm. Theoretically, yep.
Get it done that quickly, it would be done next week, so, uh, we have a motion and a second to deny, and with the, we would like them to come back as soon as possible.
Yes, um, and, and would, I'd like to know exactly what it is that, you know, we want, is it an affidavit, a surveyor's affidavit of the entire?
I think, why don't you talk to Julie a little bit and see what her office needs to make sure the boundaries are set, because it isn't for us to make that decision.
And let me be clear too, they're getting advice on what, on what's efficient, and we're not trying to hide the ball here, but I just, I, I just probably caution against, you know, saying X, Y, Z, I mean, the, the statute we've pointed out, I think, in the comments here, give enough advice, and like I said, legal counsel's working on it outside, so I just.
I have a motion and a second to deny, any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Just one question, I'm sorry to belabor this, but does planning and zoning have anything to do with this?
They, they, uh, helped out with the, the original map that you're looking here for the boundaries, uh, but then Chris Healy, uh, and I'm not certain where he went, went and retooled that map and got, got his own. So the map you're looking at here is from Mr. Healy.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two. Okay, motion passes three to two.
Motion to deny passes.
Right, so they just need to bring it back, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll see what we can do and bring her back, so.
Okay.
No reason to have five people in one opinion.
Yes, exactly. Authorized chair, item number twelve is authorize a chairman to sign the 2016 SDSU memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and the SDSU Extension Office for 4H and Youth Programming. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, good morning, Robert Wilson of the commission office. Uh, I've attached for your review and consideration the 2016 MOU between Minnehaha County and SDSU Extension Service for 4H and Youth Programming. This is basically the same agreement that you, uh, looked at last year, uh, with the exception that, uh, the dollar amount is, uh, is different. Major terms of the MOU are, are as follows, SDSU will provide full-time salary and benefit support for one full-time 4H youth advisor working a hundred percent in Minnehaha County. Uh, Minnehaha County will pay SDSU Extension for a partial salary support of a second full-time 4H youth advisor also working in Minnehaha County. That amount will be eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, that is up, uh, from the, uh, previous year's contract, so we do now have two full-time, uh, uh, 4H advisors working, uh, with the county. County also pays secretarial support for the 4H youth advisors. County provides office space as well as travel expenses for the advisors, and Minnehaha County also provides office space and expenses for two, uh, FNP, Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program positions. Cost of the 4H program, uh, and the requirements of the MOU, um, are contained in the, uh, MOU for, that's attached for your review, as well as the invoice that SDSU provided for, um, uh, this MOU.
Okay, any questions for Robert?
How much of a change is this over past, past year's budget?
I believe the two thousand, I believe, last year was approximately six thousand dollars, so, and it's a, it's a, it, uh, you're getting additional time out, out of this position as well, it was.
But it's costing us six thousand more or twelve thousand more?
Twelve thousand more.
We continue to work with SDSU to get the 4H moved out of our building and moved into, um, down to the extension area, and the only thing we're hung up on right now is internet service, and we're getting closer, so. Any questions?
Is there a reason we have to approve this right now, today, and, as opposed to waiting until we get that, that proposal finalized?
That was my comment, Carol has looked at that, um, because I was in favor of waiting until we had this finalized, but she said it doesn't make any difference with the contract.
Sure, these contracts actually take pla, should have been taken place in April, is when the contracts come due on an annual basis for that. Commissioner Heiburger is liaison to 4H, you know, is very supportive and interested in seeing them move through there, this does not, there, it just says that we will provide office space for them, it provides no location, um, so it doesn't make any difference where they're at for this, for this particular contract, the memorandum, because the memorandum happens every year.
And why is there an increase in this contract and that's not going through the budget process?
Because we've, um, added staff in.
Who's we?
For that one. Oh, sorry, we've increased, instead of having one or one and a half, we've gone to two 4H staff.
Actually, was, that was actually last year's budget, so that's already happened last year, and so it isn't an increase from last year's budget, because that already happened last year.
Okay.
And so there shouldn't be an increase, except for the normal salary increase that went through to everybody.
Correct.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Bounty employees?
Yes, no, no, they are state employees that we reimburse for a part-time position.
Did we increase the number of hours last year? Did we go from a half a year to a full time?
Yes.
So this is not unexpected, we just postponed the twelve thousand to this year. I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, comments? Commissioner Bender?
Used. Is there a twelve thousand dollar increase, or is there a six thousand dollar increase, or is there no increase?
And we can defer this for a week and get the rest of these answers, actually it should probably be more than one week because we only have three commissioners here next week. There was a change in the staffing before last year in our, in our budget process, and so that change has already occurred in 2016. I can't tell you exactly what the increase would be over last year's contract, but we had already budgeted for this increase last year. So it's in the 2016 budget, the only change in, in amounts should be if there was a change in the rent, which there shouldn't be because we have our own building, but there would be a change in the, in the, um, step increase and the insurance should be the only increases, so I don't know what the differences are.
Commissioner Heiburger, can I withdraw my second?
Yes.
Let me go back to my office and I'll get this, I used to carry these numbers in my head, but it's been since April, since I was carrying them.
Madam Chair, maybe we should move on to the next item for now, or?
Move on to the next item, or we can defer.
Not much left, I would, I guess I would prefer we just defer it.
I would prefer we defer it until questions are answered.
I'll, uh, withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer for a week.
I would say two weeks because next week we only have three people here.
Okay, two weeks.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to defer for two weeks to answer questions.
In two weeks, we don't have a meeting, it's actually the twenty eighth or something?
Yeah.
So it's more than two weeks.
So we'll say the next commission meeting, or the two commission meetings?
If you're going to get technical.
If you're going to get technical. Everybody understand when it is, it's, we have one, we've deferred one of our meetings, so, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same signed motion passes unanimously.
Item number thirteen is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports, are there any liaison reports? Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
In today's agenda, we, uh, approve two more raffles for, uh, the Badlands Motor Speedway, and it appears that they need to have, uh, a raffle every week. Is, is there a limit to how many raffles they can have, or can we just give them a carte blanche to have a raffle every week, or do they have to give us date by date by date?
As long as they meet the notice requirements ahead of time, I don't believe there's a limit on that, in fact, I, I don't know if this organization is even unique, I think if you check with the city, I think you just don't get as many of these as the city does, um, because if it's within borders of municipality, it goes to actually the city council, but, um, as long as they meet the requirements of that with a nonprofit beneficiary, I don't, I don't think there is a limit.
Wanted to ask, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other new business?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
Excuse me, at the last Minnehaha, uh, Housing and redevelopment committee meeting, we discussed adding to the membership, we currently have a five-member, is that right, five-member board. We've, we've had, we've lost some members and we've picked up members, but, uh, recently, but we've still had quorum problems quite often. Also, we kind of talked about just adding the, the, the larger numbers, so you get some more, some outs, some unique perspective, Gerald Meyer on that five, um, who else is on the, I'm sorry, oh, Carol Tweet.
Steve Anderson.
Steve Anderson, and?
Young lady from, uh?
Oh, the, the new one.
Yeah, I can't think of where she's.
So I guess we were asked to bring this back to see what the feeling of the, of the commission would be, uh, I can't remember if we talked or decided, but, you know, I think the wording could be somewhat to the effect of up to seven members, and then let the, uh, let the board pick and fill, and then with the consent of the, of the commission, so, uh, I bring that up for discussion? Gerald, have you got any more comments on what?
I think there's some, I guess, support, if you will, from that group to, uh, increase it to seven, and then hope we can get a couple more active members so that we always have a quorum.
Now, another question we had was the, whether we do it by bylaw or resolution, and I, I guess at that point, uh, have you looked at it?
Maybe we should discuss whether we want to go forward first before we decide how we're going to do it. So I'm, I'm curious as to how many times you guys have had to defer a meeting because you couldn't get a quorum.
We've done, uh, by phone meetings, you know.
Kirsten has a question. A quorum will be a majority of who you appoint, so, a quorum of a five-member board will be three, a quorum of a seven-member board will be?
Five.
Four.
Four. So you all, I mean.
You're still going to have to.
Anyway, the separate issue of, 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 uh, the organization, the resolution versus bylaws, typically these type of groups are, are organized, you know, through the Secretary of State as a nonprofit group, you file your articles in corporation, then you adopt the bylaws to get the structure. Here it's a little different in that it springs from a governmental organization, which I think explains why some of these criteria that are usually in the bylaws are, are contained in the resolution, I don't think it affects its, um, validity or anything like that, I think it's just a unique structure because, you know, that's where the authority springs from, which is a little unique compared to other nonprofit groups.
If we did it, we'd do it through resolution probably.
You'd have to amend the resolution because that way it was initially established, I mean, we can look.
I guess we'd have to do that, yeah.
And the city too, right? Is, or is this, is this just a, okay, sorry, just, just the county then, so.
I would still raise the question, is how many times have you had to defer that you couldn't get somebody on the phone to make a quorum, or?
I, going by memory, but I would say three to five over the last couple of years.
Is it significant?
We just do quarterly meetings, um, Robert, you can answer a question.
My own, my own impression is it might not be as many as that. I, I think we've, you know, we've had meetings where we've had three or four, or we've had to, uh, get, uh, get members on the, um, on the, on the phone, or maybe we have to adjust meeting times, but I, I, I don't, I, I don't think we've actually missed any meetings, uh, we've, you know.
We've rescheduled.
We've, we've, we've moved a couple around, um, but we, um.
Part of the problem, if I just want to be blunt, is two of the members go south for the winter, or wherever, and, uh, we don't see or hear from those, so I, I think we were hoping that we would have substitutes to be able to get three or four there, but we can take this back to them and, uh, ask for a, uh, discussion on the resolution and try to get a commitment.
Well, I think at this point, we were just looking for official input.
Yep.
That was really staff, um, motivation or driver to bring this forward to you in this setting today, is that we would, uh, if, if you, if there was somewhat of a desire for us to move forward, we would brief it, we would bring forward a proposed, uh, resolution for, for your consideration, and we're just looking to see if there is a, if there is an appetite to, uh, to consider, uh, this move, and we would brief that and bring it forward to you just as any other regular business item, if, if there appears to be a desire to move forward in that, in that direction.
Additional comments? I guess I would send it back to him and have him, I would hate to say it, but look at it again, because I, I think you need to look at it and see how, how, how many times they've had to defer it and, and if it's, you still have to have at least four people present.
Well, Gerald mentioned, and I think it's important too, that, um, the interest level of, of, of new, I mean, I think we would seek out people who are, who are definitely interested in the, in the operation, even though this is just a real estate deal, we do get a little bit more involved in, in just what the operation of, of the safe home is, and, you know, perhaps Mr. Karski's going to have an opportunity to take my place on it, I don't know, but, um, I, I, I do think, and I, I don't know what sending it back really does, uh, if, if the commission is interested. is interested in listening to it, I think we just come in after our next meeting, we will determine the, the wording and what to bring to the commission and bring it to you.
I think, uh, if I may, I think possibly what you need is, uh, more motivated, uh, members, and if you're going to be out of town for eight months a year, uh, quit and get somebody else appointed on the museum board. We're authorized to have eleven people, we need to have six for a quorum. We have four vacancies that the mayor has yet to appoint. We're still meeting our quorum, and, uh, you know, I don't want to be twenty-one members, uh, it's, uh, but, you know, I'm hoping to get a week off here someday. I think, Dick, uh, finding motivated members who have the time and interest is really what you need to do.
Well, and, and I'm not denying the interest of, you know, Carol's been on this program since two thousand and seven or six. Uh, her interest level, Steve's been there, I believe, the whole time. We just lost a good one, Paul moved to North, or, uh, to Northern Minnesota, so it, uh, I guess, we would like to find some fresh interest in somebody that is, has a passion for the, for the chronic homeless that, that we serve.
Maybe some of your members who, uh, travel a lot become ex-official, and they can still sit on the board, but they're not actually voting members, and you can still add more people who are interested, but I think it needs to go back.
We don't get paid, we don't get lunch.
I know that. I, I think you need to take it back for discussion and decide how you want to bring it forward to us.
All right.
So, with that, is there any other new business? Commissioner Benica?
Uh, just real quickly, um, I think it's interesting that we're potentially moving the extension people out to another location, and I asked Lloyd just off, off the cuff if he would tell me how many square footage that releases, if you will, and it's within one square foot of this building, this office space that we use for commission meetings. And I'm just throwing out the whole conversation for open discussion at the next building committee, is if that's that accurate, we could free up this whole floor for growth of state's attorney, for example, because that's been an issue for eighteen years. Move to a location that frankly, we only use this space on Tuesday mornings and a couple of planning and zoning meetings, uh, so it's not used to its full capacity, if you will. So I think at some point, we need to consider, um, moving frankly, this space to the, uh, extension building. Not going to be cheap, but it's going to be, in the long run, in the best interest of the organization.
Any other new business? We will, that'll end up on a building committee meeting for a discussion.
Ma'am Chair, under old business, right?
I'm, yep. We're ready for old business, then go ahead. I have several old business, so we got new business yet?
Two other new, uh, one, one other new business, one other, and one I'll, I'll push to old business. New business, um, Carol Mueller and myself met with Dr. Luther, uh, last week on our, uh, our medical director for our rural ambulances. Just a, a couple of points on that, that discussion. We, uh, we talked about that we will, as you know, coming up this fall, the, uh, rural ambulance licenses, um, come up, and so we will be building a timeframe for, um, uh, submission, review, and, uh, decision-making on, on those, uh, license applications. Uh, that, that is, uh, the last time it came up two years ago, that, that, um, draws quite a bit of interest from the, the rural areas of the county, and so we would, we will want to, um, spell out that timeframe, uh, very, very early, very, very clearly, well-organized, uh, and, and share that message of how we'll move, move forward with that, uh, and we will be forwarding that information to you and, and, um, getting that finalized shortly. Also, I just talked about getting a, a more regular schedule of having Dr. Luther appear to, uh, before you, uh, and presenting his, uh, his reports based on the information that he gets coming in from the rural, uh, uh, ambulance associations. And tentatively, what we are looking at is that he would be, uh, preparing quarterly reports, and we would provide those to you quarterly, uh, from the, the associations, and then also having him, uh, come up here and present to you, uh, twice a year, uh, summarizing the reports as they, as they come in and as he, uh, as he prepares and, and reviews that information.
Ma'am Chair?
And Brad?
I have to say that, uh, I, I sensed that, uh, staff is an advocate for Dr. Luther. We've paid the man three hundred thousand dollars over the last ten years. I've seen him three times. I don't believe that state law requires us to have a medical director, and I think that, you know, the, the fact that we're getting nothing, i- is he going to do this going forward out of, uh, the goodness of his own heart? No. I think the time has come to cut our cord to Dr. Luther and change our ordinance to rely on each ambulance service's own medical director, uh, and, and, uh, I, I just don't want us to plan on making Dr. Luther, uh, uh, jump through a hoop just so we can give him another thirty thousand dollars for basically nothing.
Okay. Any other, thank you, Jeff.
Do you want to know how I feel about it?
I know how you feel about it. Any other, um, new business? Okay. Is there any old business?
I would ask a question, I guess. Where are we at with legislative proposals?
That was going to be my other, that was going to be my, uh, uh, my old business update. Next week, uh, we will be, uh, bringing a discussion item forward for, for you, uh, for legislative proposals. So far, uh, fairly limited. We, we've received some input, uh, but, uh, not a, a large, uh, number. Granted, we've got a number of department heads who also are, uh, members of statewide associations, and, and they may be working through some legislative proposals through their associations, but, uh, we will make another call out to, uh, to department heads for any, um, any proposals that they want to bring forward. I've, I've heard from, uh, from one of you so far, and then, uh, others of you may still be formulating ideas that, uh, that you want to, want to put forward, but I would encourage, uh, if you have any, any ideas, anything that, that you're even kicking around in your head, that you, uh, that you may like to, uh, uh, submit as a legislative resolution, just let, let me know, and we will, um, forward for, uh, for your review and, and, uh, your discussion next week, uh, for the, uh, ideas that, that are generated with the intent that then the, the commission meeting on the following week, that will be held that Thursday, uh, uh, reschedule that, that Thursday, uh, is where you would, uh, would ultimately make your decisions of what legislative resolutions that you're going to approve as a commission forward on to the association for consideration as part of the association's, um, legislative platform for next year.
Is there any other? Commissioner Kelly?
Uh, just to tag on to Robert's remarks, I can't stress how important it is that the commission really do, does get involved in this thing. I believe I'm still on the Resolutions Committee. There will be a resolution introduced this year to dissolve the Resolutions Committee and make the Exec Committee the Resolutions Committee, and whether, but, uh, this year we'll work under the, the old process. We're at a point where I think we've gotten enough financial relief from the state to not really pursue that this year, and that's what, you know, even though I'm a lame duck, I'm still going to pursue that, that, uh, we do, uh, we do back off a little on the begging part. However, there's an, in my estimation, there's a very important issue out there that's being discussed all around the country, and that's having the state take public defense. It not only affects us, but, but you take a small county where they don't have a public defender, and you get a murder or something like that in that county, and, uh, it's pretty expensive for the small counties. So I think, I think there could be, and I think we just begin the process of talking about it. I don't think there's any illusion that it would happen, you know, maybe two or three years. It won't happen under our governor right now, I don't think, but, uh, you never know if Mike Jackley would happen to make it, he might have a different attitude. But I, I, I would encourage you, and next week, we're going to have three members here, one of which is a lame duck, uh, to discuss what we really are going to send forward to the, to the county, or to the state organization, and even though I think there'll be a full membership the, the following Thursday, is that right? I, I would encourage you to please, uh, look at some areas that you think we could do some improvements and make county government a little more efficient statewide. A lot of counties come in, and they come in with some very targeted ideas. Build a road here. And so, uh, I think every county should be looking at this globally. I don't believe we talked about it really at the district meeting, uh, the last district meeting, but, uh, it is important, and, and, uh, that, I guess that's my comment.
I think at our district meeting, we did have a, a short discussion about how we want to do it collectively, that it's a state issue and not a local issue, and I think everybody in our southeast district agreed with that, that you, if you want to take your own issues, you take them yourself as your own county, and don't make the whole association take them.
But there are some, you know, I, I think, if nothing else, it's bringing the, the collective, uh, thinking of, of, uh, in our case, five commissioners, as to what we see, and we're all pretty experienced on this thing, what we see are some issues that, could come in, and, and not maybe financial, that would be ultimately, but, but something that, something like that, that, that can have a profound effect in the way county government operates.
Any other old business? I have some old business. Okay, Carol. We're going to have more old and new business than we had regular business.
We heard, we had any business today?
I'm sure. Just a reminder about upcoming budget meetings. We have, we're meeting Wednesday at five-thirty for our next budget meeting. We will meet next week, the nineteenth, the following week. We were scheduled to meet on that Tuesday, be, but because of some extenuating circumstances, we will be meeting on Thursday, last Thursday of July, so that's one change for the public. But we will see you all tomorrow night at five-thirty.
Okay.
So what's the timeframe on Wednesday? Does that go till nine to nine-thirty? Is that?
Well, goes till we're done.
Yeah.
Goes till we're tired of each other.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we do after six o'clock?
Yeah. We might be done. I have one more old business, and that was, I attended the Mental Illness Task Force, State Task Force, again, um, yesterday in Rapid City, and, um, we are starting, we've, we've pretty much gone through all the testimony, um, and presentations, um, and we've broken down into three groups now, and those three groups are early identification and diversion, court processing and detention, and continuum of treatment and services. Um, there's categories under each one of those, um, three divisions that we're to look at. They have divided us up according to where they figure we fit the best. I'm on the continuum of, um, treatment services, and I'm the only one from Minnehaha County on that specific one, but on the other two, um, groups, there are three people representing , um, Minnehaha County on both of those. We had some public testimony yesterday, and the people who spoke thought that what we've done so far has been very positive. They're, um, anxious to see what comes out of this. Our next step is, is we're working towards what type of resolutions or what types of bills we could bring forward. We meet again in August, in between now and August, we're supposed to have met a minimum of three times by telephone conference, working on some of these projects, which have, um, at least one or two staff members with each group to try together, to still pull forward more ideas on how to make some of this work, so. It was, it was a good meeting again yesterday, they've all been very good and very focused, and we work right through lunch, and they're not real long in timeframe, but we get a lot accomplished in the amount of time that we're there, so. Okay. With that, I would look for a motion to go into executive session for litigation contracts and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second. The motion is second.